Please rise and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alex, if you could please have roll call.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Batolo.
Here.
Counselor Hanson.
Here.
Counselor Zadi.
Here.
Counselor Hickerson.
Here.
Counselor Pedri.
Here.
Counselor Demus.
Here.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Mickelson.
Here. Okay, on the consent agenda this evening, we have the city council meeting minutes of December 3rd, 2024, the health insurance fund recap of November 2024, the Main Street Board meeting minutes of November 12th, 2024, and the specific purpose tax board meeting minutes of November 18th, 2024. Counsel, do we have a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counsel Hickerson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Demus. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that carries unanimously, bringing us to our commendations portion of this evening. And I would like to invite Senator-elect Laura Pearson up to the podium to say hello, if she's here. Oh, there you are.
How was that?
Oh, yeah, no. I'm nothing if not efficient. Well, we appreciate you taking the time to come visit with us.
Yes, ma'am.
We're on. Hello?
Is there a little green light down there?
Yeah, there's a light.
Then you're perfect.
Can y'all hear me? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Laura Tolliver Pearson. I ran for Senate District 14. That encompasses Sobloc County, South Lincoln, a little of Ewellton, a little of Sweetwater County. As many of you know, if you came to any of my forums or debates, I ran because the 2020 election and COVID woke me up. And it forced me to start getting engaged and inviting for our state, listening to legislative session, looking at how our legislators were voting when they were in Cheyenne, watching those sessions and just seeing everything that was going on down there. And quite honestly, it kind of disgusted me. And rather than running away, I decided that we need to have people that will stand up and start fighting for our state. We've got to start fighting back against government overreach. And I'm talking federal government. They have got their hands in every part of Wyoming as far as education, agriculture, medicine. And we've got to start looking at the strings that are tied to that money and fighting back against that and making Wyoming, in a way, kind of self-sufficient. I'm big on election integrity. Obviously, the 2020 election woke me up. I do not want our state to in any way be a sanctuary state for illegals. And the same way as far as voting, I don't think that we should be allowing people to vote that are not citizens of this country and people that are not residents of this state. So there are a lot of things, like I had a list of probably 15 things when I ran that I'm really focused on. And so that's all. That's the reason that I ran, is because I want to protect our state. And I want all of you young folks out there to start getting engaged as well. I see a lot of young folks here. And if I can do it, anybody can do it, right? I've never ran an election ever in my life. I've been appointed to a few boards, but if I can do it, you can. And we're relying on you to run our country and run our state in the future. So I applaud you all for being here. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for coming to see us, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Next up, I will turn things over to Chief Harris Palmer to conduct commendation for Tony Hall, who's retiring from the RSPD.
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. Just a minute to recognize the career of Tony Hall. Tony Hall's been a police officer for the city of Rock Springs for 20 years. He started just after me, but I know he's worked in about every aspect in law enforcement that we have to offer in Rock Springs. He's been a patrol officer, a detective. He worked in our street crimes unit. Tony's been a sniper and a sniper team leader for several years. He headed up our firearms division. He's been an entry guy on our tech team. He's pretty much worked anywhere you can imagine in law enforcement. And Tony is one of the best guys to ever do it. And I don't say that lightly. His career has been honorable. He's served with dignity and respect, and the people of this community are lucky that he's been here. Him and his wife both have been such blessing to law enforcement in this community. I remember when he first started, you guys hosted a Super Bowl party. And it was one of the first events that I had gone to with just a group of cops, and it was the first time I felt like, hey, this is a family. And these guys were instrumental in developing that culture that we have here in Sweetwater County. And so I just want to say thank you to both of you, but tonight's Tony's night, and just thank you for your career and the work that you did, and we're all proud of you, and congratulations on an accomplishment that not many people make. So congratulations. Come on down and be recognized on. So we actually had the folks at Red White Buffalo put this together. Congratulations, but I know they want a picture. Your wife wants a picture, so make sure we get that. No? She ain't done? Got it? I got it, yeah. Are you real? I was joking about the speaker. You saw yours.
Yeah, so as Bill mentioned, Barry Tippi had a hand in making this. He's a law enforcement officer in Sweetwater County that passed away on Monday. He was a trooper for the Wyoming Highway Patrol, so if we could, just do a moment of silence for in Barry's honor. All right, I do have a little speech, but can't believe you didn't tell me you were joking about this. All right. I just want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to my incredible family, Michelle Chase and Cody. Your love and unwavering support has been the foundation of my success. I wouldn't be here without you. Thank you for always believing in me, even when I doubted myself. Your encouragement has pushed me to reach new heights and achieve my dreams. Truly blessed to have you in my life. I'm filled with a sense of gratitude for the journey I've had here at the Rock Springs Police Department. It's been an honor to be a part of this organization, to contribute to its success, to work alongside such talented and dedicated individuals. The city should truly be proud of its police force. I've learned so much and grown so much and made lifelong friendships along the way. I'm truly grateful for the opportunities and experiences that have shaped me into the person I am today. As I move forward, I carry on with, I carry with me the lessons I've learned, the values instilled in me during my time here. And I'm excited to embrace new challenges and explore new horizons, but I'll always cherish the memories and the impact I've made here. And I'm lucky enough to have three of the seated councilmen who I've learned a lot from. So thank you, guys. Thank you for all your support, guidance, and friendship. I wish you all continued success and happiness.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I've had the pleasure and honor to be able to work with both of the halls since they very first started 20 years ago. And I want to say that there's not been two better officers than Michelle and Tony. And working with them has been just truly a pleasure and an honor, like I said.
Your Honor. Yes, sir. Yeah, Tony, I haven't got to work with Michelle except for off the, you know, through the other agency, but Tony's one of those guys that doesn't come around very often. You're lucky to have him. His crew looked up to him, his colleagues looked up to him, and his supervisors looked up to him. So thank you. And I'm sure that Michelle's got a list of to-do items for you. Ready to go?
Yep.
She does.
All right, congratulations, Tony. Thanks. Counsel.
I've worked with, like Randy said, I've worked with both Michelle and Tony, and been great, especially the years that we're on SWAT team together. Trust you. Trust you guys with my life. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and congratulations. And you are correct, we are very, very proud of the Rock Springs Police Department. Thank you for your contributions to our community. Okay, next up, we have a recognition for a project that was started at a Christian youth retreat, and I would welcome students Bailey Cutler, Kiara Forbush, Kate Kilpak, Autumn Madsen, Jimelyn Stalfer, and Autumn Tanner, and then the adult leadership of Beth Guard, Ally Moser, and Natalie Powell up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Powell, and I'm here with Beth Guard and Ally Moser. We were the adults who got to serve alongside this group of amazing students. These young ladies planned and executed a three-day Christian camp for girls this summer that had over 150 people from Rock Springs and Farsen attend. They were very intentional with their goals for the camp, one of which was to help the girls attending and their peers feel less alone. It's amazing to see these girls step up and lead. The most inspiring part of the camp is what we want to highlight today. They had the participants of the camp hand-make bracelets with positive and encouraging messages on them. The bracelets say things like, "You are loved," "Keep going," "You are enough," among other affirmations. Each bracelet was specifically made in the service of others. Each one was packaged with a handwritten note from the girl who made it. And over 100 of these bracelets were delivered to the Rock Springs Junior High Counseling Staff to be handed out to kids who might need to be reminded that they are not alone and are seen. We're so proud to know these amazing student leaders. Their empathy and care for others has made a difference, and we are so happy to see them recognized for their service today. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Do you have any comments or questions? Now, we certainly appreciate the work. The council and city and I have spent the last, I don't know, five, six months really focused on the sort of mental health challenges that we have in our community. And what always comes up is that lack of connection. And this was a really wonderful project to help bring people together and to help people feel seen. And so that is wonderful work and very appreciated, and thank you, and I hope that you continue. Don't let this be a one-off, right? But thank you so very much. And we've got a certificate for you, and we'll come down and get a picture.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
They wanted us to hand these. All right, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to presentations and proclamations, and we have the Academy of Public Service Student Update.
Guess what? I'm mad.
You're what?
I'm mad.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Marley Adams, and this is Jillian Polynick. We are in the Rock Springs High School Academy of Public Service, and we are here representing the Health Occupation Career Academy, HOKA, and the Academy of Public Service, APS, and the CTE Academy at Rock Springs High School. The HOKA focuses on careers in the medical field like doctors, nurses, veterinarians, and more. APS focuses on careers in public service like firefighting, law enforcement, teaching, law, and other public entities. The CTE Academy focuses on vocational trades like welding, woods, metals, automotive, education, culinary, computer science, and aviation, with a concentration for all in business. These academies are programs also are programs beginning sophomore year that allow students to explore a career field that interests them. This also provides a cohort environment for students to be a part of for their sophomore through senior year. The program provides time and opportunities for field trips, guest speakers, job shadowing, and mentoring. We will report out each month what our programs are doing and what we have done to partner with the community.
In the month of December, here is what we have been doing. Juniors and seniors in the APS and HOKA academies have been job shadowing around the county. Seniors in all three academies are mentoring at the K-6 buildings. The juniors, the junior APS students are completing a case study final project to which you are all welcome to attend, and these will be held at the Rock Springs Satellite Campus tomorrow at 12:00 PM. The sophomores in the APS Academy have completed a presentation on fears related to certain careers. The APS sophomores have also had a roundtable discussion with a few public service entities in the county. The HOKA juniors are doing a Shark Tank project in which they present a business invention ideas to community members. The HOKA seniors are currently providing meals for nearly 200 elementary schools' students in the weekends. The HOKA juniors just returned from Cheyenne, where they presented a series of oral arguments for the We the People State Hearing at the State Capitol. CTE juniors have been mentoring at elementary schools and the junior high this month. CTE sophomores did research and created presentations on their potential career in dedicated pathway and presented to their classes. Also, the CTE Academy has partnered with Ryan Bledsoe and ISC to bring industry mentors to our classrooms, as well as to get our juniors and seniors partnered up with the community businesses in their pathway for more focused job shadowing opportunities. CTE Academy Students of the Month are sophomores Hunter Murray and Ashley Rodriguez. And the CTE Academy Students of the Month for juniors are Trace Walker and Brandon Dale. We appreciate your time, and we wish you a happy and safe holiday season.
Thank you, counsel. Any questions or comments further? No, we certainly appreciate you providing us with that information, and we love hearing about your good work.
Thank you.
Hope you have a wonderful Christmas. Okay, that takes us to petitions and public comment. If anybody would like to address the council and I, just pop on up to the podium and identify yourself and who, if any, organization you represent. Seeing none, we'll move forward to bills and claims, starting with the bills and claims for December 17th, 2024. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Demus.
I make a motion to approve the bills and claims for December 17th, 2024.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Whoa. I'll go with Counsel Zadi for a second.
You seconded? I kind of stopped halfway.
Okay, we'll go with Counsel Hanson for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
Okay, the motion carries with Counselors Pedri and Thompson abstaining, taking us to the salaries for December 6th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Demus.
I make a motion to approve the salaries for December 6th, 2024.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counsel Zadi with the second that time. I heard it loud and clear. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
Okay, the motion carries with Counselors Thompson and Pedri abstaining, bringing us to new business. First up, we have a request from the Engineering Operations and Public Services Department for permission to fill a vacant Assistant City Planner position. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Demus.
I make a motion to approve this request.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Counsel Zadi, with that very timely second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, taking us to a request from the Fire Department for permission to apply for an assistance to firefighters grant to purchase a roof ventilation prop for training purposes and for the purchase and installation of a station alerting system. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Batolo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Pedri. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, bringing us to our final item of new business, a request from Animal Control for permission to revise the schedule of fees to add a microchip fee to offer microchip services to the public for $20 and to increase the out-of-town surrender fee from $35 to $50. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Hanson.
I move to approve this request.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Thompson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, taking us to our first resolution of this evening, Resolution 2024-177.
A resolution accepting and approving an interlocal agreement justice assistance grant program award 2024 between the county of Sweetwater, Wyoming, and the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and authorizing Max Mickelson as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Demus.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-177.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Hickerson. We're gonna go with Bias because he's so close. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, bringing us to Resolution 2024-178.
A resolution accepting a quick claim deed from McCurtin Rentals, a Wyoming general partnership for real property situated in the county of Sweetwater, state of Wyoming.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Hickerson.
Move to approve Resolution 2024-178.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Hanson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, bringing us to Resolution 2024-179.
A resolution authorizing and directing Max Mickelson as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to accept and approve a budget revision to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Counsel Batolo, seconded by Counsel Zadi. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, taking us to Resolution 2024-180.
A resolution accepting and approving a contract between the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Budell Construction Company in the amount of $12,947,938, and authorizing Max Mickelson as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said contract on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Hickerson.
Move to approve Resolution 2024-180.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Pedri. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, taking us to Resolution 2024-181.
A resolution approving a parking space, a public parking space lease agreement with the city of Rock Springs and Square State Brewing PC to provide for the placement of an outdoor dining deck in the parking space located adjacent to its establishment.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Demus.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-181.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you, Counsel Thompson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, and I've received a notification that our YouTube feed has frozen.
Oh.
I bet people can guess who notified me that it's frozen.
Yes.
Do you want it out loud? I can't see through that little dark window.
Okay, so then we will move forward and blame the gremlins.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
The full video will be published to YouTube tomorrow, typically from the backup, so it will be available.
That works. Taking us to Resolution 2024-182.
A resolution accepting and approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and firefighters local 1499 IAFF, and authorizing Max Mickelson as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Zadi.
I'd move to approve Resolution 2024-182.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Demus. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Hickerson.
Just curious as to what the purpose of this is.
Essentially, it will make the computation of overtime a simpler and less error-prone process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Will this cause us to have more overtime?
So the clearest answer to that is, who can say? It's highly dependent on the individual person's use of sick leave and vacation time. So, yeah or no, but that's just sort of true anyway. It's not something that we can really predict.
In other words, it's been an issue with the way it was before.
Yep, but with the longer duty cycle, we have a much harder time going back over several weeks to figure out each individual person's overtime based on what they've done. And so this should simplify things and reduce errors, and hopefully make us more efficient.
Nice explanation. Crystal clear.
Yeah.
Clear as mud.
Yeah, I'm good at that. Okay, yeah, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, taking us to Resolution 2024-183.
A resolution accepting and approving a lease agreement with the Food Bank of Sweetwater County for the purpose of operating a food distribution program.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Counsel Demus.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-183.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Hickerson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, bringing us to our final resolution, 2024-184.
A resolution accepting and approving an Amendment 1 to the grant. to the Grant Award Agreement between the Wyoming State Loan and Investment Board, SLIB, and the City of Rock Springs, and authorizing Max Mickelson as mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming to execute said Amendment One on behalf of said city.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Counsel Batolo.
Your honor, I do have a question. Was this something that was left out of the original bid? Or what's the purpose of this increase?
Your honor, Counselor Batolo, what it was is we received the original ARPA grant and the state of Wyoming has to have all of the ARPA funds encumbered by the end of the year. They had leftover money essentially that was not encumbered. And so they redistributed that by some formula to all of the encumbered grants, all these. And so this is our amount that we received in addition to that.
We'll take it.
Yeah.
So long story short, shut up and take their money.
Very good. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Hickerson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries unanimously, taking us to counsel updates. Before I turn it over to the counsel, I just wanted to congratulate Kayla McDonald. She was elected to her second term as president of WIDA, the Wyoming Economic Development Association. And so that's a pretty good thing to have somebody from our county who's leading that particular charge. So with that, counsel?
Your honor.
Counsel Zadi.
I just want to thank JJ and I think Chad Banks with the URA for the work that they did at Bunning Park. The feedback we've seen has been tremendous. People, I haven't heard anything negative. It's all positive, which is rare, but it looks great. I look forward to continuing and building on that in the coming years and just really appreciate the work you guys did.
Your honor.
Counsel.
Two things, I would agree with that. I would hope that I could maybe get the little piece of property right next to my house into a park so I could get the trees done next Christmas.
No, no more parks. We're in a park pause.
Otherwise, I just wanted to take a minute to tell all of you thank you for the last four years. Some of you just the last two years, but you know, you're okay anyway. Department heads, I have learned so much about the city in the last four years. During my decades as a police officer, I kind of had a very narrow view of what the city involved. And now I've just got this broader perspective that makes me really, really appreciate the employees, the efforts that's put into it and the work that the department heads do to just keep everything functioning the way they do. We're truly blessed. Told Dave I wasn't going to cry. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you for all you did the last four years.
Thanks, Tim.
Absolutely. Plus, you looked completely jacked in that picture. I don't know if y'all saw, the Iron Cowboy put up a picture and dude's got some guns. You looked ready to go fight some terrorists.
Photoshop.
That's exactly what I said. I figured it was Photoshop.
Yeah, we will miss you.
Thanks. I'll miss you guys.
I'm sure you guys could have lunch.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Tonight's tough for me as well. This will be my last meeting. For professional and personal reasons, I won't be able to fulfill my upcoming term. I want to thank the citizens for giving me the honor. I apologize. I wish I would have known or I wouldn't have ran for the position. It's been a pleasure serving with all you guys. It really has been. The council, mayor, I appreciate it. The department heads, thank you. I've learned a lot from you as well. So it's, this has been a bad end of the table to me, so anyway. Thank you.
We will definitely miss you and wish you luck as you go forward.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll say I got to go to the Klein Wyoming graduation the other night up at the college. It was wonderful. There was, I believe, eight graduates for their CNA program. The place was filled. I mean, it was just gave up, I think, shows that there's hope for the, it's mostly for the single mothers. I mean, there is a path out of, you don't have to be stuck in poverty. And so they're continuing their education in nursing and it was, it was a great time.
That's wonderful.
I would like to say I attended the parade. The people that were there was, it was a big crowd. I don't know, but it was a nice show. It was a good time.
And it was warmer than last year.
This has been a really banner year for Christmas celebration in Rock Springs, that's for certain. Anyone else? We are adjourned.